Good evening, everyone. At this time, I'd like to call a Board of Education meeting to order, and I'd like to ask my members to identify themselves for the record. Todd Frante is present, William Buchanan.
Present.
Katie Anis.
Present.
John Andes.
Present.
William Gordy.
Present.
Elaine McComas.
Present.
Donald Smack.
Present.
We do have a quorum. Now I need a motion to approve today's board agenda meeting and a second.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Smack.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Gordy, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And now we have an invocation tonight, and I'd like Mr. Tolbert to lead us in that invocation, and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's power heads in prayer. To really just want to thank you so much for blessing us with another wonderful day. We thank you for everyone here who has come out tonight to participate in this meeting. We thank you for our wonderful school system, Lord, and all the great things that are happening, Lord, from academics to the sports field, to the dramas and the music, everything good that's happening. We thank you for our wonderful students, we thank you for our teachers and all of our staff who work so hard each and every day to make sure their students have what they need to be successful. We ask you to be with this board tonight, Lord, and your staff as we start this budget process, let us continue to work through and provide the resources that these students need, Lord. We ask you to always watch over us to keep us safe, give us continued wisdom and guidance in everything we do and everything we say. All this God's here, precious name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Tolbert, for that invocation. And I'd like to welcome everyone this evening. On behalf of the entire Board of Education, I want to say thank you for being with us and coming out to share your ideas and requests for the upcoming fiscal year 25, '26. We are a board that truly does appreciate the support as well as the feedback that we receive from our school system community, whether it's a formal meeting like tonight or an email to any of us, or even when we see you in the supermarket. We appreciate the fact that you have input, and we like to know what you have to say, and we take your comments to heart. So we will continue to do our best to represent the thoughts and feelings of thousands of you across this beautiful county, and as we further discuss our FY '25, '26 budget. I'm not going to steal Mr. Taylor's thunder, because we have a lot of great things going on in our schools, but again, thank you for being a part of this process. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to our superintendent for some comments.
Thank you, Mr. Frante. Before I get into my comments, it did my heart good tonight when I was standing up, maybe you couldn't hear it, when we were saying the Pledge of Allegiance, this young man here saying the Pledge of Allegiance really was impressive, and that's what I like to see from young people, saying, "Yeah, Dad, give him a high five." I love that. Anyway, first, I'd like to extend my thanks to everyone who is joining us tonight, whether online or here, for this budget input hearing. Each year, I continue to be overwhelmed by the support we have from our teachers, our administrators at both the school and county level, and by the number of families wishing to lend their voice to our budget discussions and our budget work. As Mr. Frante said, both the Board of Education and our leadership team truly value the feedback of our school system community, and this meeting tonight is a great example of just that. I am proud to have the opportunity to hear from both our schools and from our community on how we can best support learning across our entire school system. Despite the challenges of rising costs across our country, one thing is clear: our school system community remains committed to providing the best education possible to the young people of Worcester County, and we are succeeding. Just today, the State Department of Education has lifted its embargo, and I am so proud tonight to announce that Worcester County Public Schools has by far the highest concentration of four and five schools in the state of Maryland. I think that deserves a round of applause. I've been biting at the bit all day, I couldn't wait to say that tonight, but until I got that embargo lifted and Steers told me I could do it, I had to wait till tonight. So thank you for acknowledging that. Now, this level of success truly starts with our teachers. Let me say that again. This level of success that we have starts with those folks who work day in and day out in the trenches in our classrooms. As it is every budget cycle, ensuring that we can continue to recruit and retain excellent teachers is our highest, and I mean our highest priority. This is achieved through the ability to offer salary and benefit packages that reflect the professionalism and dedication of the amazing educators that make up our high-achieving school system. And as a forty-year, forty-one-year employee, I see it year in and year out, and it's time they are compensated for their outstanding work. We also recognize the need to ensure that our infrastructure, both physical and technological, are sound. As I've said many times now, and as we saw last month during a presentation at the board meeting, our investment in technology has been game-changing for this system. Wish I could go back and explain all that to you, how it changed right before the pandemic. We recently celebrated the fact with a recent showcase, we were asked to showcase of our...
Excuse me.
I told him to turn his phone off.
Well, let me stop right there. That alarm is I'm a diabetic, and it's either telling me my sugar is high or my sugar is low. Sorry about that, I'll turn that off, it may go off again, but I don't want to stop my remarks. We recently celebrated the fact with a recent showcase, and we were asked by Apple, of our Apple Distinguished Schools to show it to other Maryland's superintendents. And I'd like to thank Dr. Gallagher and BIS, Dr. Wallace, Dr. Ms. Shorts, and Carrie Steers, who lead our technology plan, for putting on such an outstanding presentation to my colleagues here in Maryland. But of course, as we all know, technology evolves quickly, so we will continue to be forward-thinking so we can ensure our classroom and our IT infrastructure are fully equipped to handle each exciting new wave of learning technology. And with that, I would like to again say thank you to everyone present here, and as I said earlier, those viewing our live stream tonight. And I would like to end my remarks with a heartfelt thank you to both Mr. Tolbert and his team for their hard work they do to put together a school system budget that meets the needs of all, and I quote "all," all students. It is a difficult and incredibly important job, and I am proud that we have such an amazing team, including all our schools, coordinators, and everybody involved in this school system work, keeping that moving in the right direction. And with that, thank you very much for allowing me to comment tonight, and again, I'm back to you, Mr. Frante.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Thank you for those comments as well. I'd like to move on to the early retirement incentive, and I'll turn that over to Dr. App for a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Frante. Here to ask the board for their consideration to support the early retirement incentive again this year. As this board knows, last year and as in years prior, we have offered an early incentive for teachers that would be retiring. And why do we do this? It helps in our recruiting. We do this program in February, we have our own recruiting fair in March, and last year, of course, we weren't able to take advantage of that particular fair because we had some questions about staffing last year. But I believe this year in March, with this incentive, we'll be able to be first out of the gate, hiring great people again, and we should be seeing some turnover savings as well as our senior teachers who will be retiring are at the top of our scale, making the most money. So when we do these things, we usually see turnover savings each year. So with that, I'd like to ask that the board, the superintendent recommends the approval of the early retirement incentive for this particular year.
Great. Anyone have any questions for Dr. App?
Yeah, what, sorry. What are the incentives? Just remind me.
The incentives are the same as last year, so it'd be a ten percent of the employee salary, and then we would pay up to $25 per sick day that they would have in their bank, not use sick days.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Seeing none, can I have a motion and a second to approve the early retirement incentive as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Buchanan.
Second.
Second by Dr. Andes, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Dr. App, appreciate that. Now move on to the Stephen Decatur Middle School light replacement, and I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Sam Slakeum. Sam? Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You have to flip that off, there you go.
On November 14th, bids were taken for the replacement of the light poles at Stephen Decatur Middle School. We had four responsive bidders to replace the existing light poles at the school with new aluminum, high-efficiency LED lighting. The need for replacement was brought on by one of our light poles going down, and further inspection of our existing light poles, we found them that they needed to be replaced. Funding for this is provided by residual construction money that was unspent from the addition to Stephen Decatur Middle School, and on behalf of the superintendent, we recommend approval of the replacement of the light poles at Stephen Decatur Middle School to ADEX Electric in the amount of $77,738.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Slakeum? I will also let this board know that today this was also approved by the county commissioners to fund these school lights, so we thank them for that. Any questions? Okay, can I have a motion and a second to approve the replacement light poles at SDMS to ADEX Electric in the amount of $77,738?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. McComas and a second by Mr. Smack, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Slakeum, appreciate that.
I think those light poles are 28 years old. They're the original light poles?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm very familiar with those light poles.
Thank you for the history, Dr. Andes.
You're welcome.
Now I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Tolbert for the Blueprint Pillar Five presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Frante. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Welcome to the second most highly anticipated event in the month of December, the Worcester County Public School Budget Input Meeting. And for everyone in attendance, Christmas is coming early this year, because I have not just one, but two presentations for you. So you must have been really good this year, okay? I'm going to start off with the blueprint presentation as, you want to advance? As everyone I'm sure here knows about the blueprint, right? But just in case you don't, I'm going to take just one slide and talk about what the blueprint is. The blueprint is Maryland law that was passed, and what it's supposed to do is improve the quality of education for all children in Maryland. And it has five pillars. Right now, Dee is our blueprint coordinator, Dee Short, she's overseeing the blueprint for us, and the superintendent has assigned a staff member for each pillar. So for pillar one, Ms. Short is also overseeing that, it's early childhood, that includes pre-K related blueprint requirements. Pillar two is being overseen by Dr. App, that's high-quality diverse teachers and leaders. And the two things that are in there that are real important are the $60,000 starting teacher salary that we have to get to by FY '27, which is two years from now. Right now, we're at $52,789. We gotta get the $60,000 in two years. Also in that pillar is national board certified teachers. As you know, when you receive NBC status, you receive additional $10,000 in funding in your salary. Pillar three is being handled by Dr. Wallace, that's college and career readiness pathways, including CTE, and two items in there are the dual enrollment and AP courses and the CTE programs that we offer at the technical high school. Pillar four is being handled by Lauren Williams, and that's resources to ensure every student succeeds. And pillar five, which is what we're going to talk about tonight, is governance and accountability. And included in that pillar are to make sure all the reports are being filed properly, to make sure we're receiving stakeholder involvement, and the real big one in pillar five is resource allocation, and we're going to talk about that tonight. So pillar five is huge, it's going to bring extensive operational financial challenges, it's going to require multiple players, both inside and outside the school system, to make it happen successfully. Those players include the Worcester County Board of Education, the Worcester County Government, the Maryland State Department of Education, and the Accountability and Implementation Board, or AIB. We're all going to have to work together as we implement the blueprint successfully. So I wanted to give everybody a little history lesson. I've been here a long time, I know all this. Back in 2003 or '04, Maryland passed the Thornton funding. Is there a member of Thornton funding?
Yep.
Beth does, okay, Beth. It's also a business excellence, okay? So what happened with that funding is MSD would send funding to the local school systems, right, based on a wealth-based formula, based on enrollments, K-12 enrollment, special ed, comp ed, and multilingual learners. The county funding was, the baseline has always been mates of effort with the county, that's the sort they have to give us, okay? That was bridge to excellence funding. So we get the money in that manner, and then we spent the money, and we had to report back to MSD in 15 budget categories. That's how we reported our expenditures, under Bridge to Excellence. Now we're moving on to the new blueprint funding, and there's some really key differences in this on the way they handle the blueprint funding. MSD still sends local school systems funding based on a wealth-based formula, they still driven by enrollment in K-12 forums, special ed, and ML. The county governments now have a floor of either mates of effort funding or the local share. Each of the blueprint programs has a per-people amount associated with it, you'll see that later in my presentation, and that has a local share and a state share. So what they do is add up all the local shares, you get a total, and you look at mates of effort, and the greater those is the floor that the county has to provide. On the expenditure side, which this is a huge difference, okay, we have to report back on how we spent the money by blueprint program, okay, and it also has to be allocated by student to the school that student attends. Seventy-five percent of the blueprint funding has to be tied to the student at the school they attend. And I'll show you more about that in a future slide. We talk about this wealth-based formula, and just to give everyone an example of how that impacts Worcester, this is national board certification I talked about earlier. When a teacher receives NBC, blueprint says they get $10,000 extra added to their salary, and it's supposed to be split between the county and the state. Well, in Worcester County, because we're considered the wealthiest county in Maryland, we get about $2,400 of that $10,000 from the state. So our county's got to pick up $7,600 of it. In Caroline County, which is the highest poverty county, they get about $9,300 from the state, and their county pays about $700. So do you see how that wealth-based formula really impacts? Our county's got to pick up, you know, $7,600, Caroline County picks up $700 of the $10,000. So that, I want to demonstrate how that worked. No, you're fine, Carrie. Carrie is my wonderful assistant, thank you, Carrie. This slide shows the mandated blueprint funding programs by statute, so if you ever get bored and want to look up and read about each one, you can certainly do that, but that's the statute that references each blueprint funding area. The blueprint major funding categories, okay, is foundation, comp ed, which is free reduced meal students, multilingual learner, special education, and pre-K. And under each one is an amount, these are FY '25 amounts. So for foundation, which means your basic student, you're supposed to spend $8,789 per student. That's state and local share both, that's the combined amount. For comp ed, if it's a comp ed student, you add on $7,559. If it's a multilingual learner, you add on another $8,965. Special education, you add $8,701 more, and then pre-K is kind of separate because that's a separate count, but you get $13,000 per student for pre-K students. And underneath each one of these, we have to allocate costs, as I said earlier, to each one of these funding streams. So right now, we're thinking this is all a draft because it could change, but under foundation, we're thinking basic classroom teachers, administrators, secretaries, student services positions, technology, materials of instruction, those kind of things would be under basic foundation funding. Comp ed would include additional classroom teachers, additional student services positions, interventions, and after-school and summer school. Under multilingual learner, it would include additional classroom teachers, ELL teachers, translation expenses, those types of things. And special education would include special education teachers, special education assistants, occupational and physical therapy, speech, and materials of instruction, and of course, pre-K can only cover pre-K teachers and pre-K assistants and materials of instruction. And besides the blueprint and the costs associated with the blueprint implementing that, we still have inflationary pressures on our operating budget. We have transportation costs that continue to increase, utility costs continue to increase, health insurance continues to increase. The blueprint takes none of that into account, so that's on top of everything else that we have to absorb with the blueprint. Those costs are going to continue to go up in our budget. You know, how are we going to come about implementing the blueprint? Well, we're going to have to review every expenditure account and associate it with our blueprint revenue stream, okay? That's very labor-intensive, but that's what we have to do. And we're going to use the Maryland State Department of Education Thiel Book, it's a financial manual, and also they came out with some guides on the baby blue book a couple, well, about a year ago, we're using that too. And we're going to have to allocate the budgets and expenditures to schools. I mean, a lot of these expenses, like central office expenses, like the finance office, HR, payroll, superintendent's office, technology, maintenance, those things have always been budgeted here and expensed here at the central office level. We're going to have to now break those out and allocate those to schools to meet the blueprint. Utilities have always been budgeted centrally, we expense them to the school, if we don't actually budget to the level of the school, the blueprint is going to require us to budget them to the school level. Next slide, Gary. So what are we going to do? We're going to go through, and we're going to look at the objectives that we have in our ESA consolidated plan and our blueprint implementation plan, and we're going to use that as a guide as we go through and make these decisions. And we're also going to have to look at, you know, models of staffing, because at some point, this is probably going to require us to relocate and move staff from one school to the other to meet that seventy-five percent of the funding following the student. And this is, I think, is a good example that I think everybody can understand. So if student A is just a regular student, not special ed, not comp ed, not multilingual, $8,769 is the amount allocated through the blueprint. And student B, they're also a comp ed student, free reduced meals, she had on $7,559 for that, and now you're $16,348. If student C is also multilingual learner in special education, you allocate $34,014 to that student. So what this is saying, and this is a very, it's not going to be a real case, but just to make it simple, suppose we had two elementary schools in Worcester County, and they both have 300 kids enrolled in those schools, right? The elementary school A has 300 student A students, right? That means I'm going to allocate about $2.6 million to that 300 student school. Elementary school B has 300 student Cs enrolled, at $34,000 per pupil. That would mean I would allocate $10.2 million to that school. So two elementary schools, side by side, both have 300 kids enrolled, one's getting $2.6 and one's getting $10.2. That's what the blueprint says, and that's why I say at some point in time, it might require this board to relocate staff to other schools to meet that requirement of the seventy-five percent of funding following the student. The timeline for implementing this allocation, FY '25, the year I'm in now is a baseline. We're working now to get where we are, to see how close we are to the seventy-five percent. Any gaps, we've got to reduce by 50% in FY '26, which is next budget year, and by FY ' '27, we have to be fully implemented with 100% of students attending schools, with seventy-five percent of the allocation of the funds following the student. These are some additional resources and information that you can look up and find out more information about the blueprint. And before we move on to this, does anybody have any questions about that? Yes?
Does that mean if the, do you think you go back to your FY '25 line, where it's the, yes, that one? Yes. So when this is for year '27, that would be that 100% of students in a school that you're saying, is that also a question of your reality then? Or is that too far, the future?
Well, in FY '27, we have to be fully implemented, so by then, seventy-five percent of the fundings has to follow the student. So if we find out in this year that some of our schools are not compliant, '26, we've got to start working on reducing that by 50%, and FY '27, it should be fully implemented, which means we may have to move staff at that point. I'm not saying we have to move staff, but what I'm saying is we possibly, probably will at some point have to relocate staff between schools. And I'll say this, but the state gives us, and I'll show you this later, less than 20% of our funding, okay? But they're telling this Board of Education how to spend seventy-five percent of our funds. If that's not the tail wagging the dog, I don't know what is. Now I'll get off my soapbox now, I want to say that, okay? But, so, any other questions about the blueprint?
So this, it seems like this will really impact schools with, that have like less enrollment, where, you know, you may have less, less students, like third class, or they're going to, so there's not one that you can do.
It possibly could, yeah. Yeah. Yes?
Could this affect, um, I don't know the wording for it, comments with this is all the time where they change lines as far as this community to this school?
Right. Like a week district winner? Yeah, I don't want to speculate on that at this point, I hope not, but I don't, it probably wouldn't help with this situation.
Wouldn't help the situation.
No. 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 It'd be more movement of staff, not students.
Okay. Any, any board members have any questions for Mr. Tolbert? Ms. McComas?
I hate to throw a wrench. Just FYI, the state has already announced it's out of money. So we, we have no idea how this is going to affect us, but we have to, we have to deal with that as it comes down the line.
Yeah. You're exactly right. I mean, the state has announced they've got a $2.6 billion deficit. They're looking at it as our FY26, that grows to 5.6 by 2029. So some changes could come. They could delay some of this implementation a few years. As of today, this is where we are. It could change at any time based on what the state does. That's a great point, Ms. McComas.
Okay. Any other board members? Okay. I'm going to, Vince, we're going to move on, I guess, to the budget overview?
Sure. Yep.
Okay. Thank you for that presentation. It was very informative. We appreciate that.
You're welcome. All right. So my next presentation is just an FY25 budget update. Oh, Carrie, do you want to talk about? I think Carrie wanted to talk about getting the input.
If it's possible.
Go ahead.
So a significant part of the blueprint is also gathering stakeholder feedback on how we are implementing the blueprint. So Mr. Tolbert just gave a wonderful overview about pillar five. So what we'd like to ask everybody in attendance tonight, if you don't mind whipping out that cellphone, and those on our live stream, hopefully this slide is up for you so you can also participate. But we'd love for you to be able to, it's a single question that you're going to answer. It's an open-ended question, just about now that you've kind of have a baseline education on what pillar five entails, what are your budget priorities for, to share with this board in terms of not only our blueprint implementation, but our budget process moving forward? So if you don't mind just taking a moment, I will leave this up for just a brief second so everyone can scan it, and then we will move on. Thank you.
And it works.
Thanks, Carrie. While we're waiting for that, I would, I would refer either to our assistant superintendents that a lot of the things that the blueprint requires, we are currently already doing in Worcester County public schools. We, go, go ahead, Dee.
Yes. Hopefully I'm on it. Yes, we've already made significant changes and have been already implementing things in pillar one. I could speak directly to around early childhood. We've increased and have been a model for what we've been doing with our pre-K expansion in the state by applying for pre-K expansion grants and expanding our pre-K three and four programs. Dr. App can talk about the work that we've been doing around NBC, so we have been working on that, although it does, again, come with a cost. Dr. Wallace may want to talk a bit about the pathways work that she has been working on since she was a principal even in our district.
Yes, as far as the pathways that were required, the AP pathways, as well as the pathway to an AA degree, were things that we have been doing at, at a school in our district for probably, gosh, over 10 years now. So it was very easy for us to replicate that work across our district because we already had the pathway to an AA degree finished, and we already had our AP pathways that were done and implemented in one of our high schools for about 10 years now. We were actually used as a model at our last state meeting for AP pathways as a model for the state. They asked us to do a presentation, so we did, we presented that.
And in pillar two, we are ahead of the curve as well. In conjunction with our Teachers Association, we were one of the first districts to have a approved career ladder. That was one of the requirements of this legislation, and we continue to work on all of those aspects of the career ladder going forward. So we are, we're in pretty good shape.
Right. Thank you.
And just, just before we move on to, I know last time I shared with you Afton and some pictures of the Afton partners. This is exactly the work that they're helping our district with. It's called minimal school funding and how we work to ensure that our monies are following those students to the school. So I think that Mr. Tolbert did an excellent job of explaining exactly what that means tonight. So thank you so much, Mr. Tolbert.
You're welcome, Ms. Schwartz. I did want to mention Dr. Brian Cook, because he is very involved in the blueprint in, in every pillar, and he does a phenomenal job.
He's with us tonight.
Yeah, there he is. I didn't know you were there, Brian. You can pay me later. No. We went on to the budget overview for FY25. Our operating budget this year is $132,235,748. The cap-outlay budget is $100,000, and school construction is $60,000. And that really is just funding the design fee of the Pokemoke Elementary School roof project that's coming up. Sources of revenue, as I talked about, we're very dependent on our county government for our funding. This year, they give us 69.6%. State aid is 19.6. Federal aid is 10.2, and other is .6. And if you would go to like Comico or Somerset or Dorchester, this would be flipped, where the state aid was probably 70%, and the county aid was much less because of the wealth-based formula. On the expenditure side this year, 42.4% of our budget is instructional cost. Special education is 10%. Student transportation is 6.2. Operation of plant is 7.5. Maintenance of plant is 1.3. Fixed charges is 22.5, and mid-level is 7%. There's some other really small ones in there. Admin is 1.6%. And student health service is 1.9%. So the majority of our budget continues to be spent on, on staff, on instruction, which is where it should be, and this graph illustrates that. This graph expenditures by category, again, it shows the five-year trend, and the top is our instructional cost. The second one is our fixed charges, and the blue, the third, is special education. That's where we continue to spend our dollars, invest our dollars, the other ones are the other categories, and they're very low and continue to be almost flat. So we continue to put money in the classroom with the students. 86.4% of our budget is people. It's salaries and it's fixed charges. And this is a different breakdown of our operating budget. Once again, 86.4% salaries and fixed charges. 7.1% is contractual services, which is largely our bus contractors, their contracted employees. Supplies and materials is 2.9%, and that's basically materials of instruction and our annual lease payment that we pay for our technology. And other is 3.5%. And the majority of that is our utilities to keep our lights on, and equipment is .1%. What are in salaries and fixed charges? It's salaries that are paid in accordance with our negotiated agreement. It's extra duty pay for coaching and clubs and activities. It's PD. It's substitute pay, and it's our compensation package, which is our health insurance, our FICA, and tuition reimbursement, those types of things. 76% of our contractual services are the bus contractors' payments.
Yeah, but that's the two bus.
And other contractual services are, I'm going to ban this, Carrie. Other contractual services include HVAC repairs, trash removal, audit services, legal services, Xerox copy releases, and special education behavioral health services. This chart shows starting teacher salary, and I did say earlier, we're the lowest in this state, as you can see, at $52,789 for starting teacher salary. And we have to get that number to $60,000 by FY27, which is two years from now. So last in the state. This chart shows free reduced meals. You can see Worcester at 49%. It's just at the state average of 49%. So we continue to have an issue of poverty in Worcester County, where almost 50% of our students coming from households of poverty. This is state aid per pupil. As you can see, because of the wealth-based formula, Worcester receives its lowest amount of state funding at about $4,500, which is less than half of the state average, which is $9,500. So the state does not give us very much money at all in the state wealth per pupil, and this is why, because their self, their state wealth-based formula, we're considered the wealthiest county in the state, almost $1.5 million per pupil. And what drives that is the cesspool base in Ocean City. They divide a number of students by that huge cesspool base, and we're considered very wealthy using that formula. Per people spending, we actually rank third in per people spending. We're not the highest per people spending at a little over $21,400. Both Baltimore and Somerset spend more than, Baltimore City and Somerset spend more than we do per pupil. Some things we're looking at, the board will be looking at as we start to build the budget for next year. A step increase next year for all employees is estimated to cost about $1.2 million. A 1% cost of living for all employees is about $795,000. And health insurance, we just did start meeting with the Health Benefits Committee. We don't know what that number's going to be yet. That probably won't be finalized until February. Minutes of effort, I think everyone knows what minutes of effort is, but I'll just explain it real quick. What that says, it's a law from the state that says the county government has to provide the school system with the same level of funding on a per people basis next year that they supplied this year. So if enrollment goes up a little bit, they give us a little bit more money. If it goes down, they can give us less money. But minutes of effort is not going to maintain the school system. As we saw back in '24, they gave us minutes of effort we had to cut, okay? Minutes of effort is not, that's the floor. We need more minutes of effort to build and expand and maintain our school system. Any questions on that presentation?
Yeah. Any questions from the board?
Questions here?
Yeah.
Any questions from the board? I'm sorry.
Dr. Annes.
I'd like to thank Mr. Tolbert for that excellent presentation. And just a couple of factual information. In order to be eligible for a farm, so free reduced meals, a single parent and a child has to earn less than $26,000. So I don't know how anyone can make it on $26,000. In a family of four, it's $45,000, and I have no idea how a family of four can make it on $45,000. So when Mr. Tolbert puts up that figure of 49.4% eligible, that's a significant number of our students who come to our schools who need additional support, like small class sizes, meals program, after-school programs, summer school programs to provide assistance to get all of our students to what our superintendent said today, and that is a level of excellence as exhibited by our schools, our four and five-star schools, and our rankings in the state of number one in English language and number two in math. So when that figure goes up there of 49.4, whatever happens to be, I think it's important that we understand the criteria that the federal government uses to determine that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Annes. Any other board members have any questions for Mr. Tolbert? Mr. Tolbert, I want to thank you and your staff for the presentation. You did an excellent job, as usual.
Thank you, Ms. Fronte. I appreciate it.
And now it's time for school community participation, and we want to hear from our schools and our representatives from the PSYACs and PTAs of what they'd like to hear. And I have an order set up for me here, and I'm going to start with Shaw Elementary School and Gerard Butler. Mr. Butler, when you come up, please speak into the mic so we can hear on a live stream. That'd be great. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jerry Butler. I am a proud parent of Jerry and Emily, both at Shaw Elementary. I'm impressed constantly by the hard work of every employee of the county, especially the teachers. As a parent, I'm encourage you, I'm encouraging you to focus on your budget efforts on the following areas for next year. First, allow Worcester County to retain, recruit, and hire the best staff, and to find a way to give the staff a step and a pay raise. It would be amazing to fill any previously cut positions from a budget shortfall in the past. As a county that has repeatedly outperformed all other counties on every standardized test, our teachers deserve to be compensated at the highest possible level. Secondly, I'd like to maintain present class size by maintaining or increasing the level of staffing. In order for teachers to do their job effectively, they need to give individualized feedback to their students, as, as well as manage their time in classroom wisely. Having a manageable class size for teachers enables them to focus their attention on students who need it the most. Third, continue to promote and fund technology use in our schools. Our students are preparing for the next step in school as well as their careers, which means that understanding and using current technology is critical for learning. Lastly, restore all previously cut personnel and programs. Having a strong after-school program and summer academy is critical to continue to close gaps for some of our neediest children. Additionally, restoring a cut teaching position and custodian position will enable Shaw to maintain small class sizes and keep our schools looking great. I want to give a big thank you to our Board of Education for their strong efforts with the funding in our county, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ocean City Elementary School. Leah Touchton?
Good evening. Good evening. Let me start with saying that I am an educator for 25 years in higher education. We moved here from Texas, and I chose your school system because it's amazing from 21 hours away. So I have three children in your school system. I have one senior, Stephen Decatur, and I have two at Ocean City Elementary. I'm excited to be here. I'm excited to be part of the school system, and I, I do have some requests. Since I've been here, I do volunteer at the school four days a week, so I'm able to see what goes on there. And on behalf of Ocean City Elementary, I would like to request as a concerned parent, and also as a fellow educator, that you restore the cuts that were made. My understanding is that positions were cut. I think it's very important to restore those. I've noticed even in my children's classes that as the class sizes get bigger, there's less attention paid to the student. So my second request is to maintain the small class sizes. I think that's very essential for our students. Also, I would like for you to obviously fund salaries at the highest position that you can. I think that's very important to retain good student, retain good teachers, recruit good teachers, and just the morale of the school. I think it would be awesome for that. And then, technology obviously is a big point. I think it is very important to keep that in the classroom. I'm very impressed with the level of technology that I see in the classroom, and I know that our students and my children benefit from that. I want to thank you for maintaining an awesome school system, and I hope that the future is bright for our students and for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And next, we're going to hear from Buckingham Elementary, Elizabeth Calabrese. Good evening.
I'm Elizabeth Calabrese. I'm, I reside in Berlin. I'm a PSYAC member representing Buckingham. My daughter Jane is in second grade, and my son Morgan's pre-K, and I'm a treasurer of the Buckingham PTA. I wanted to start by thanking the board for your support of our new school. It's exciting. And the PSYAC has identified the following budget requests for next year. First is the recruitment and retention of highly effective teachers and staff. It's fundamental for the success of our students. We need a strong compensation plan. It's essential for maintaining a highly qualified and diverse team, and especially as compensation for talented, I'm sorry, competition for talented educator, educators on the eastern shores growing. We don't want to continue losing our amazing teachers who have such a positive impact on our students and our community. We respectfully request that the salary packages for all the staff be reviewed and adjusted to remain competitive with our near, nearby school districts. The second item is, like you mentioned, it's been mentioned a lot of times, we're a top-performing school system, and maintaining the smaller class size is critical to ensure the highest quality of our students' education. We request that this is a priority to maintain manageable class sizes, particularly in our elementary classrooms. And it's also important to provide adequate support to our teachers. Educational assistance help our teachers meet the needs of all students. My third item, or I should say, our third item, is materials of instruction. Materials of instruction funds are vital for enriching the educational experience of our students, and cuts to these funds had a direct impact on our ability to provide engaging learning activities and necessary interventions. We request that the district reinstate and prioritize the funding for materials of instruction to ensure that our teachers have the resources needed to address the unique learning needs of our students. I'd like to thank the board again for your dedication to the I'd like to thank the board again for your dedication to the students and the teachers of Worcester County, and I appreciate your time and attention. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is Snow Hill Elementary School, Erica Harrison.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So my name is Erica Harrison. I am a resident of Snow Hill, Maryland. I also moved here approximately eight years ago from a neighboring county, and I will not bore you with what county. But needless to say, I moved here eight years ago just for the school system. I have three daughters in Worcester County Public Schools. I have two at Snow Hill Elementary and one at Snow Hill Middle. I also serve on the PSYAC committee where I have for the past two school years for Snow Hill Elementary. Snow Hill Elementary's test scores are among the highest in the district and above the state average in both reading and math. Quality teachers have a significant impact on student learning and instruction. Teachers should be compensated at a higher salary to reflect the exceptional instruction taking place at Snow Hill Elementary School. Classroom sizes are always a concern. Having smaller class sizes directly benefit every student and the parents as well. I feel like you get better classroom management when you go and observe your students. You know, they have more personalized experiences that way. Snow Hill Elementary School could also benefit from a special ed teacher per grade. Snow Hill Elementary School plans to apply for the Apple Distinguished School Recognition, which aims to inspire innovation, problem-solving, and community impact. And if approved, the elementary school would be the first Apple Distinguished Elementary School in Worcester County. Funding for professional development and continuing our contract with Apple devices is vital to support the technology and enhance learning. So I appreciate you listening to me this evening.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. And next we have Pokemoke Elementary School. We have Latrell Crawford.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Latrell Crawford, and I reside in Pokemoke City, Maryland. I am also a graduate of Pokemoke City Schools. I have three amazing children who attend Pokemoke City Schools. I have a daughter in the high school. She is in eleventh grade. I have two daughters in the elementary school, one third grade and one pre-K three. I would like to thank you for the opportunity to share Pokemoke Elementary School community's top-three budget requests for fiscal year twenty-five. We would first like to thank you for your continued support and focus on making Worcester County Public Schools a world-class school system. Our first request is a salary step and raise for all staff members. The salary and benefit package should match the high level of achievement of our schools. With the national teacher shortage, we must recruit and retain amazing teachers because our children deserve the best. Our second budget request is maintaining and decreasing classroom sizes. Small class sizes are so critical in order to meet each student's needs and personalize their learning. By increasing the number of teachers in our support staff, our classrooms will continue to be safe and high-achieving. Our third budget request is the addition of a school counseling secretary or registrar. With nearly five hundred students at Pokemoke Elementary School and an ever-increasing need for the mental health support of our children, we require another school counselor to be able to meet with the students. This school year, the school counselor registered a hundred and sixty students. Tracking down proof of income and residency with several language barriers is very time-consuming and pulls the one school counselor away from the children that need her most. Thank you so much for your time and consideration and for your continued dedication and support to all of our students in Worcester County Public Schools.
Thank you. Thank you. And next we have Cedar Chapel Special School, Jeremy Senhouser.
My name is Jeremy Senhouser. I'm a resident of Eden, Maryland. I have two children. I'm glad to believe he's a connoisseur, Mason Senhouser. He attends Cedar Chapel, and then my oldest son Cody, he's at Snow Hill High School. I came from Delaware Sussex County a few years ago, dealing with Howard T. Yennis with a special needs child, and I can tell you from personal experience that Cedar Chapel has stepped up his expectations and his management way better than I've ever expected from Delaware. And it says a lot, Delaware was highly recommended, and Cedar Chapel blew him out of the water. For our budget requests, our children accomplish great things because of the dedicated staff. Keeping staff salaries a priority ensures high-quality educational experiences for all of our children. Please form a budget that compensates the education and experience of all staff. Secondly, keeping class sizes small will support student learning and student success while providing the intense academic and behavioral interventions needed for all CCSS students. To speak on what Mr. Taylor talked about, with technology being ever-growing, replacing technology using a systematic plan is essential to ensuring that students have access to instructional tools. Keeping this a top priority keeps students' devices up to date, which is beneficial for everybody involved. Please also find a way to restore materials of instruction cuts in order to ensure that teachers have the individualized and hands-on materials that students need to succeed. And finally, please consider a plan to replace the playground fence as it is ready for a new type of fence that can accommodate the needs of the CCSS students and provide an extra layer of safety. Thank you for your time. We appreciate all that you do for the students of Worcester County and Cedar Chapel Special School.
Thank you. And now up is Berlin Intermediate, Amy McCaslin.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Amy McCaslin. I'm a local resident and a local business owner. But most importantly, I'm a proud parent of two daughters, one who attends Berlin Intermediate School and a senior at Stephen Decatur High School. We moved here in two thousand eighteen from Anarundel County, and since the day we've moved here, we've been absolutely blown away by all of the efforts of the school system. As a parent representing BIS tonight, I'm encouraging you to focus on your budget efforts on three main areas for next year. First, allow Worcester County to retain, recruit, and hire the best staff and to give the staff a step or pay raise. We are fortunate in this county to have incredible teachers, which is why we need to do our best to keep them here. It is difficult to recruit and retain high-quality teachers without a competitive salary scale. Year after year, Worcester County's public schools lead the state in student achievement. My youngest daughter has special needs and requires a large team to help her learn. We must be able to retain these educators. I personally cannot do life without their impact on my children. Secondly, we are requesting the board fund a full-time social worker at Berlin Intermediate School. Across our entire country, we are seeing a mental health crisis. Our school's social workers are crucial in providing mental health support for students, connecting families with additional community resources. Currently, BIS has a part-time social worker that is shared with Stephen Decatur Middle School. I cannot emphasize enough, mental health needs to be a major priority. I've personally seen firsthand students and my own struggle with anxiety and depression. When they aren't healthy mentally, they aren't able to fully function in school. Third, prioritize small class sizes. Students in Worcester County Public Schools continue to perform at high levels because teachers are committed to using student data to personalize instruction. At BIS, most academic classes have between twenty-two and twenty-four, special areas classes have between twenty-five and twenty-six students. Last year, in light of our budget concerns, we reduced one classroom teacher to create an additional special ed teacher to support increasing and complex caseloads. We do not want to see increases in class sizes in the coming years. I would like to extend my personal gratitude for all that you all do. The time and the efforts that you put into better our county is not unnoticed. Thank you for your strong efforts for funding our county, and on behalf of the BIS community, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Pokemoke Middle, and that is Lindsay George.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right. So my name is Lindsay George. I'm here as a proud parent of two students in Pokemoke Schools. I am also a graduate of Pokemoke Schools. It's actually my sister up on the board over there, on one of those pictures. Just realized that tonight. So my daughter is an eighth-grade student at Pokemoke Middle. I have a ninth grader at Pokemoke High School. And both my kids have benefited from Pokemoke Middle's teachers, after-school programs, and summer programs, as well as the classroom sizes, which leads me as to why I'm here tonight. I'm here to advocate for Pokemoke Middle School. I'm speaking because our schools, teachers, and students deserve the resources necessary to continue the incredible academic success in our county. First, we urge you to restore teacher salaries to levels that reflect their dedication and expertise. Our teachers are the backbone of student success, yet many are undercompensated despite leading our students to high academic achievement. Competitive salaries are crucial to attracting and retaining the high-quality educators our children deserve. Second, we ask you to continue funding the after-school and summer programs that provide the vital support for our students. These programs not only enrich learning, but also ensure a safe and nurturing environment for children while offering working parents peace of mind. And finally, we ask that you prioritize restoring positions that were previously cut, allowing us to maintain small class sizes. Smaller class sizes mean more individualized attention, better academic outcomes, and stronger teacher-student relationships, all of which are critical for continued success. Investing in these areas is not just an investment in our schools, it's an investment in our community and their future, and our future. Thank you for your consideration and for your commitment to supporting our schools.
Thank you.
Next up is Snow Hill Middle School, and that is Katie Harland.
Good evening. My name is Katie Harland, and I'm representing Snow Hill Middle School. I currently have a fourth grader, Jeremiah, at Snow Hill Middle School, and two daughters that go to Snow Hill Elementary School, Kaylee and Piper, and they are in second and pre-K three. I am also a graduate of Snow Hill High School. My husband and I both chose Snow Hill Schools because we knew the Snow Hill Special Education Teams would help Jeremiah succeed in his education. Jeremiah's Special Education Teams have always exceeded our expectations every single year, as well as our girls would have several opportunities to excel within their education. Mr. Gordy, I live in your district. I would like to thank you for your support of Snow Hill Middle School. The best part of the school is the amazing and super patient staff who interact with my son Jeremiah on a daily basis. My son really enjoys corn dogs and mac and cheese, but in academics, he really loves I-ready math and the ability to be Jeremiah while actively learning. We are asking for four areas in our budget request this year. The first is to have the very best teacher and staff salary package, which is equal to the work of our top-rated school system and our top-rated teachers and staff. The second request is to have our small class sizes continued, to which my children have greatly benefited. The third request is to continue to put our students first with a continued after-school program funding and technology upgrades with the Apple refresh. The fourth is to restore the previous year's cuts to the schools, both in staffing and MOI. We need to have these funds restored so we can continue to move forward with our school. Thank you so much. I know you have a very difficult job, and please know we are very, very thankful and very blessed for each one of you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next school is Stephen Decatur Middle School, and I have Rebecca McCowsky.
I am.
She should speak towards it.
I am Rebecca McCowsky, and I'm an Ocean City resident. I am a member of the Stephen Decatur Middle School PSYAC team, and I am a proud mom of three girls that are in Worcester County Public Schools. Joni is currently at Stephen Decatur Middle School, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak on the behalf of the staff, the families, and the students regarding the budgetary needs of the school. At Stephen Decatur Middle School, the teachers and staff strive to provide a well-rounded and impactful education with a focus on fostering academic excellence, supporting student wellness, and enhancing career readiness. To achieve these goals, I respectfully request on the behalf a funding that will support the current team structure with no reduction of teachers. A part-time position to support the multilingual learners and review the teacher's salary package to ensure it aligns with extraordinary results our teachers are delivering. Offering a compensation package that matches the value our teachers bring not only honors their contributions, but also positions our school as a desirable place to attract and retain top-tier talent. These investments are in critical and equipping our students with the tools and skills they need to succeed in an ever-changing world. We deeply appreciate your consideration of these priorities and your ongoing commitment to our county's youth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next school up is Stephen Decatur High School, and we have Tammy Donaway. Dr. Tammy Donaway.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Tammy Donaway. I'm a PSYAC member representing Stephen Decatur High School, and bear with me as I decipher my doctor writing. I'm pretty sure only a pharmacist will be able to read. I'm a product of Worcester County Public Schools. I graduated in ninety-nine. This is my third time speaking here. I really love coming to speak about my school system. I'm very proud to be a graduate. And it always gets a chuckle when I point out that at least three of you were a part of the school system when I was here. Mr. Taylor was my principal at Stephen Decatur High School. Dr. Annes was superintendent. And Ms. Schwartz was my second-grade teacher. Annette and I were rivals. She was a Stephen Decatur softball player, or I'm sorry, a Snow Hill softball player. I apologize. And I was Stephen Decatur. So Annette was there as well. So I have put a lot of trust in Worcester County Public Schools. I have three daughters, all attending schools in Worcester County. My oldest daughter Madison, she's a junior at Stephen Decatur. I also have two daughters, Chloe and Lorelei. One is in sixth and seventh, Chloe at Berlin Intermediate and Lorelei at Stephen Decatur Middle School, and she is loving Stephen Decatur Middle School. So we're very, very happy. I would first like to thank you, all of you, and your hard work supporting the students and teachers of Worcester County. And as a representative of Stephen Decatur today, we would like to make the following budget requests, and we have four. I want to start by saying that Mr. Taylor stole my thunder. He said specifically, "This level of success starts with our teachers." It's really time for our hard-working teachers in Worcester County to be paid for their exemplary work that takes place in all of our schools every single day. As the number-one school in the system, school system in the state of Maryland, our teachers should be paid as such. Worcester County teacher salary ranks in the bottom third for the twenty-four school systems in the state. Competing for the best and brightest teachers is becoming extremely difficult when our neighboring counties are really paying their teachers six to seven thousand dollars more, particularly for these young people starting their career. That's very attractive. We are in a desperate situation, and paying our teachers a wage that reflects the amount of work that they're doing is really imperative. I think a step increase is definitely a step in the right direction. Second, we request that you continue our county focus on small class sizes for all schools. At Stephen Decatur High, we lost two positions last year due to the budgetary restraints. We cannot afford to lose additional positions in the future, and we need to look not only at restoring those two that we lost, but increasing our teaching staff to accommodate the rising student population. We are just growing as a community, and we really need the support for that. I'm going to quote Mr. Taylor again. He said, "Our investment in technology is game-changing." We request that you continue to value the impact of this ever-changing technology. Our schools and our students depend on the most up-to-date and innovative technology available to be successful in today's world. I don't know about you, but I depend on them to teach me too, so let's please invest in this. Our students need to have the most current devices with an infrastructure that can support the needs of this large school. Lastly, we request that you please return our materials of instruction budget to its normal levels. Our MOI budget and all other schools were cut again last year. We desperately need this to be returned to normal to support our teachers and students, as well as special programs such as our after-school academy. I thank you all for your support of me throughout my life, as well as my children, and for all you do for our community. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up is Snow Hill High School, and we have Tom Harris.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Tom Harris.
My name is Tom Harris, and I'm a proud resident of Snow Hill. My daughter Violet is a junior at Snow Hill High School, and my daughter Magnolia graduated from Snow Hill High School last year. I want to thank the administration and the teachers and the staff at Snow Hill High School for preparing my daughter Magnolia to move from a school of 300 to College Park and a school of 30,000. It was seamless. But I'm here, I'm here tonight because I care deeply about the education that my daughters and all students in Worcester County should receive. I want to express my gratitude for the work that you do to support our schools and community. And I'm here to advocate for a 2025-26 budget that prioritizes the needs of our students and educators. First and foremost, I believe Worcester County must provide competitive compensation for our teachers and staff. To retain and attract the best educators, we need to ensure that they are compensated to the highest level possible. Talented, motivated educators are the foundation of student success, and my daughters and every other student deserve nothing less. Second, I urge the board to maintain small class sizes. Smaller classes allow for personalized instruction, which helps students thrive. They also make it easier for teachers to manage their classrooms effectively, creating a better learning environment for everyone. Third, our district has made incredible strides with technology, but we need to keep up with advancements. The devices our students use are on their third refresh cycle and will soon require updates. Investing in this technology is essential for ensuring that our students remain competitive in today's digital world. Finally, I ask the board to fully restore funding for the after-school and summer school programs. These programs provide invaluable opportunities for academic enrichment and support. They help close gaps, build confidence, and strengthen the foundation for our students' futures. Our students, teachers, and staff are worth this investment. With your continued support, we can ensure that Worcester County Public Schools remain a place where all students can thrive. Thank you for your time, for your service, and for your consideration of these critical priorities.
Thank you. Next up is Pokemoke High School. We have Mark Thompson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Mark Thompson. I reside in Pokemoke. I have two children in the Pokemoke School System, Kylie is a junior, and Charlie in seventh grade. I am here respectfully to present three important budget requests on behalf of our school community. First, we request an excellent salary and benefits package for our teachers. To maintain excellence of our school system, it is crucial that we attract and retain the best educators for our students. While our school ratings and standardized test scores rank among the highest in the state, our teachers are some of the lowest paid instructional staff to serve the highest salary scale in the state. We cannot afford to lose talented staff to neighboring counties where compensation is more competitive. Second, we request continued funding to support small class sizes. Smaller classes are vital to effectively meet the diverse needs of our students and provide personal attention. Additionally, they allow teachers to address the growing mental health challenges of many of our students' faces. Third, we request ongoing support for student and staff technology. We became an Apple senior school last year. The use of Apple technology is essential to preparing our students for success in a competitive workforce. Proficiency with technology along with innovation and creativity is crucial for equipping our students with the necessary skills for an ever-evolving job market. Thank you for your time and consideration. I wish you all one full evening.
Thank you very much. And next up is Worcester Technical High School. We have Kim Galloway.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Kim Galloway. I am an educator at one of our local universities. I am also the very proud parent of Annalee Holmes. She is a sophomore at Decatur and is enrolled in the Project Lead the Way Computer Science Program at Worcester Technical High School. I'm a member of Worcester Tech's PSYAC Committee, and I fully and enthusiastically support the vision and the mission of Worcester Technical High School. And to be completely frank with you, when the opportunity came for volunteers to speak with you, I had to sit on my hands to keep from jumping up and saying, "Pick me, pick me, pick me," because this school has changed my daughter's life. In the last year, she is rapidly losing her vision. She is legally blind. She will not be able to drive a car, but thanks to Worcester Tech, she'll have an amazing career. An amazing career. The confidence that she's been given by the teachers, the opportunities that are... Now, as a freshman, she got to be in a national competition in Atlanta. That's amazing. That's amazing. From the bottom of my mother's heart, I thank you. I thank you for all that you do, and I know that this school, as well as all the others, do the same for every single student. You see them. So first and foremost, on behalf of Mr. Bevel Aqua and myself, we want to thank you for your continued support of the school, its current programs and initiatives like the NEST Early Learning Center, the Summer Stat Camp Program, Digital Music and Video Production, and the Pines Cafe, which if you haven't had their chicken salad, get it now. Thank you. Our fiscal year 25-26 budget is simple and straightforward. We have four basic requests. First, we are anticipating new state requirements for career and technology education. MSDU would like to see flexible student course scheduling, and this has implications on instruction. We're asking that you maintain or increase funding for materials of instruction to reflect potential curriculum changes. Secondly, we humbly ask that teachers and support staff be compensated at the highest levels of salaries and benefits to reflect the quality of education that our students are receiving. We all know that they deserve it. Third, summer is an important time to offer students enrichment opportunities and prevent that dreaded summer slide. The data collected from our summer 2024 Stat Camp surveys illustrate that the students and parents had an overwhelmingly positive experience. We ask that the Board of Education assist us in continuing to fund stipends, materials of instruction, and student transportation so that we can plan and execute a summer 2025 Stat Camp program. Please. Lastly, our final request is about our welding program. Under Rick Stevens, it's experienced tremendous success over the years. The program's full. There's a waiting list. A simple internet search reveals that there are 42 unfilled jobs in the Salisbury area, starting at $22 an hour, which is probably more than I make. Our current welding shop, however, does lack adequate space and ventilation. We would like to ask that a welding lab upgrade be considered as a capital improvement project. Again, I want to thank you sincerely for your support of our students, staff, schools, community, parents, all of us, and for all the hard work and tedious work I'm sure that you do. It's a comfort. It's a blessing to know that our school board representatives and executive leadership team operate under the notion of what is in the best interest of our students, and that every student matters. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And last up this evening, and last but not least, is our WCTA President Beth Shockley Lynch.
Good evening, President Ferrante and board members. My name is Beth Shockley Lynch. I'm a lifelong resident of Worcester County and a proud graduate of Snow Hill High School. I'm proud to say I have three Worcester County Public School graduates who I've all finished paying for college. I teach at Snow Hill Middle School, and I currently serve as the president of Worcester County Teachers Association. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I'd like to begin by thanking all of you for your commitment to our school system. Your priority has always been to make decisions that make our school system the very best it can be. Mr. Smack, Ms. McComas, and Dr. Andes, thank you for taking us on for another term. We truly appreciate you. It's an honor to represent my fellow teachers. Our teachers are an amazing group of talented and dedicated individuals that are committed to our students and have a quest for learning themselves. They work tirelessly to give our students the very best. These are the qualities that every employer wants in their employees. They're proud of this profession that they've chosen, and they've proven they're willing to stand up for it. Each year, we survey teachers about what they're thinking and feeling. The number-one thing we found in our survey results is they need a competitive salary. Eighty-four percent of the results, eighty-four percent of our teachers had an advanced degree. Seventy-four percent of our teachers have worked for us for at least 10 years. That level of expertise should be recorded. Many indicated they are looking for opportunities elsewhere. Every time we lose someone to one of our neighbors, we've lost an investment. We've trained and prepared people for the job, and that training and expertise goes with them. If we hire the best, we need to keep the best. To get the best and maintain the best comes with a cost. Unfortunately, we're still in last place. This means that the young people seeking a job, as us old people move along, our new hires are going to be offered once again the lowest starting salary in the state. We can do better than last place. Educators have direct contact with students each and every day. They are the most valuable resource Worcester County Public Schools have, and they deserve to be rewarded. Compensation is a sign of respect for the job, and the job is tough. As I travel throughout the state, meeting my colleagues, I'm often asked, "How do you guys get those test scores? What's your secret? What's in that secret sauce you all have?" My answer is always, "Our people." Our teachers are the difference between average and above-average. Don't ruin the sauce. That will ultimately destroy the meal. Our motto for years has been, "People make a difference," and that still rings true. By ensuring that our educators are well-compensated, you attract and maintain skilled professionals that are motivated to invest in our students' success. We must strive to improve our salaries and make these people want to fight to be part of Team Worcester. There's no doubt in my mind, if you were able to make all of these decisions and they were completely in your control, you'd give us everything and more. I have no doubt you will do your very best to show us how much you are valued. We truly appreciate you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, that's from all of our schools, and I just want to say thank you to all the PSYAC and PTA members that came out tonight to share with us your thoughts about the financial decisions that we need to make up here that will carry our schools forward and keep them in the forefront and successful for the remainder of the school year. And now, I'm going to move on to individuals and delegations comments. And all individuals who've signed up to address the Worcester County Board of Education may do so for one or two minutes regarding information, accommodations, or concerns, which may need future board attention. Concerns that are specific to an individual will not be discussed in an open session. It should be directed to appropriate district personnel for discussion. When you are called to address the board, please state your name and address for the record, and please speak into the mic so the people on the livestream can hear that. And tonight, my first speaker is Kathy Kater. Come on up. Thank you. Thank you. Good evening.
I am Kathy Kater. I reside in Bishopville. I want to preface my comments by saying, I'm probably preaching to the choir, for sure. I know that all of you pretty much agree with everything that's being said. If it was in your power, you would do it. You're going to hear, you have heard, many reoccurring themes tonight. You'll also notice that you cannot speak to one without speaking to the others. They are intrinsically, they're linked. We say our children are the future, and in order to make sure that future is the best it can be, we need to invest in it. We need to invest in them. This investment needs to include equality and inclusion, supporting all our students regardless of identified disabilities, for them to become successful and viable workforce. And to have that, we must have highly qualified teachers that are provided reasons to teach in our county. That means competitive salaries and adjustments for current teacher salaries. However, that alone is not enough if we give them large classes with a higher teacher-to-student ratio with inadequate support within. Support in the classroom is critical, such as classroom EAs. They provide a role enabling teachers to carry out their lesson plans while attending to individual learning needs of their students. Mental health concerns have increased on par with these learning disabilities. The need for additional help for students who experience emotional or behavioral issues are vast and need to be addressed if learning is to take place, not only for them, but for the others in the classroom as well. This will require specialized people, such as social workers, with the appropriate training to address the concerns of these children. So you can see how all of these one links to another to another. You cannot separate them. As a former employee of the school system, I have seen the effects that lack of funding can do. And I can see what, how it has impacted classes in trying to reach success for their students. If these, if there are those that are expecting these teachers to fulfill all of these aforementioned roles without appropriate pay or supporting personnel, that's like getting blood out of a rock, and it's very naive. As a former employee, grandparent to a student, parent to employees, and parent of former successful students, we need to provide the best education possible to turn out these very good and successful citizens we have been.
Kathy?
Yes.
Just wrap it up for you, please. Thank you.
I got you. It will, I know that, I know that you guys support this. That's unquestionable. However, it will be up to the county commissioners to understand the necessity of these items without the detriment to other important supporting programs in our schools. Again, thank you for your consideration. Our children are our future, and let's invest in them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Nancy Michelson. Good evening.
You're not going to hear anything new from me. You've heard it all, all night. But I would like to add my voice of support for all of you for doing everything that you have done for our schools and to let you know that as a grandparent of a sophomore at Stephen Decatur High School and a third grader at Shawell Elementary, I certainly support the priority of giving our teachers the compensation that they deserve for the excellent job that they have been doing for us over the years. I can't help but note that Worcester County Public Schools has received numerous accolades statewide, locally, nationally. And our accomplishments can be directly tied to the talents and dedication of the personnel throughout our system. If our teachers, as you know, can better meet their family's economic needs by going elsewhere, they will. I know that if they do... I know that if they do, it will be with regret, but they have to put their families' needs first. We've seen that in the past several years. I want my grandchildren to be taught by the best teachers. I want the best to stay in Worcester County. But I don't want salary increases to come at the expense of class size and auxiliary personnel. I've visited both of my grandchildren's schools during American Education Week, and I can attest that no matter how talented the teacher, the rigorous state curriculum demands more hands-on deck in every one of the classrooms. And yet, I noticed at both Stephen Decatur High School and Shawell Elementary, the students needed adult help that was, was difficult for individuals to get because the classes were larger than I remember them being last year when I visited those schools. Staffing priorities would meet the needs of my family, for whom support for diverse and inclusive education for all students is our number-one need. I know that you're going to have hard decisions to make in the coming months, and I appreciate all of the effort that you are all giving. I can't thank you enough for serving Worcester County Public Schools.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tom Simon.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Tom Simon. I live in Berlin, and I am the proud parent of a kindergartner and a pre-kindergartner at Buckingham Elementary School, the most magical place on earth. I want to begin by sharing how thankful I am for the amazing teachers that my children have. Mrs. Grimes in kindergarten and Mrs. Semantik in, as well as Mrs. Rain in pre-K are truly exceptional human beings. Their enthusiasm, creativity, and deep care for their students are evident in everything that they do. I feel incredibly fortunate to have my kids in the school system, surrounded by educators who give so much of themselves every, every single day. In addition to being a parent, I am also a founding member of Worcester United, a group dedicated to supporting and strengthening public education in our county. The following items are our priorities, identified by Worcester United members, and these are the issues that we would like the board to focus on during this budget cycle. Promoting equity and inclusion, ensuring every student feels supported and valued, with an emphasis on celebrating diversity and providing inclusive opportunities for all. Number two, investing in teachers and staff, offering competitive pay and ongoing professional development to recruit and retain the best educators. Number three, maintaining small class sizes, keeping class sizes manageable so students can get the personalized attention that they deserve. Number four, expanding mental health resources, increasing access to counseling and mental health services to support students' overall well-being. Number five, fostering a well-rounded education, strengthening programs in the arts, music, and extracurriculars to give students opportunities to grow and explore their talents. I'm very proud to call Worcester County home and to see firsthand the incredible work being done in our schools. Thank you for your time, your leadership, and your continued commitment to our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's all I have on my list this evening, but is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak before I close out the individual delegation comments? And seeing none, I appreciate the speakers, and we'll move on to, actually, I'll ask any of my board members if they have any comments before I move on to upcoming announcements. Mr. Gordy?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. I, our last regular meeting, I was visited by some sort of intestinal virus that asked me to leave.
Thank you for sharing that.
To be incredibly embarrassed. So I left. I apologize. I just, I had, recently, I had an experience of attending a meeting of the leadership of our, of our Judy Centers. We have three now, is that right? I, I have to tell you, that was enlightening. Those folks are incredible, but of course, everybody in Worcester County is incredible. But they truly are. They start with infants and toddlers, and they prepare these young people to be lifelong learners, and you see the results. I don't think our Judy Centers get enough attention or enough credit for the work that they do, but thanks to, thanks to the leadership and the, and the folks at the Judy Centers for getting infants and toddlers ready to learn. Are you kidding me? They do a great job, and our, our success overall is, is in no small part due to the work that they do at that ground level. Also, I just want to thank the voters of Worcester County for turning these, returning these three incumbents back to their office. They have done an incredible job. They're great public servants. They have worked hard. They, they, again, are no small part of why we entertain some success here in Worcester County. So I just want to thank the voters of Worcester County, all of you, all of you who participated in that, for returning these three incumbents so that they continue to do the work that they have done in the past. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gordy. Anyone else wishing any comments? Okay, moving forward, I'm sorry, Dr. Andes.
I wanted to personally thank everyone who came out tonight and shared your thoughts. The recipe for success in Worcester County Public Schools has been the same recipe we've used for 30 years. And that recipe is very simple. We hire the best people we possibly can find, and we do everything we can to keep them. Number two, we have small class sizes, as small as we can possibly make it for all the reasons that were discussed tonight. Third, we have a robust assessment program in our school system that allows our teachers to identify students who either need enrichment or need remediation. And then we have after-school and summer school programs to provide, provide immediate support and assistance for those students. The fifth thing is the tools, the materials of instruction, and particularly the technology that allows our students to be successful, not only for today, but for tomorrow. And finally, our community-based schools. That is, no matter where you are in the school system, whether you're at the 320-some-odd students in Snow Hill High School, eventually you get to College Park, or, or you're at Stephen Decatur High School with nearly 1,300 students, or at Pokemoke High School, the opportunities in all of our schools are the same irregardless of your zip code, irregardless of your zip code. Whether your zip code is Pokemoke or your zip code is Ocean Pines, you have the same opportunity as every single student in our school system. So that's the recipe for success. That's the reason we're number one, and that's the reason we will continue to be number one as long as we can do what you asked for tonight, as long as we can do what you asked for tonight. So thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. I deeply appreciate everything that you've said. I embrace what you've said, and I particularly want to thank Dr. Donaway for pointing out my age. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Andes.
I second that.
Is there any other board members wishing to make any comments? I also want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. You know, that's what makes our school system great, is that we have great community participation. Not only, you know, the people that teach at our schools, but the parents who are so involved in our school system. It really does make a difference, and we appreciate your participation in letting us know what your needs for your school are. Our upcoming board meeting, our next regular Board of Education meeting is going to be held on Tuesday, December 17th, right here in the Sarah D. Thompson Board Meeting Room, Worcester County Board of Education Central Office. And the open session will begin at 10:30, and we'll immediately consider to vote in going into closed session under general provisions of Article 3-305B of the Annotated Code of Maryland. The board will reconvene in open session at 12:30, and the board meeting information is posted on our website, www.westerkt12.org, located under Board Meetings and Board Docs. And now, I would ask my fellow board members for a motion to adjourn today's open session. A motion by Mr. Smack?
Second.
And a second by Ms. McComas. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We adjourn. Thank you very much. Have a nice evening.